Good evening. The August 9th meeting of the Evanston City Council shall come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Here.
Councilmember Vavel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
With nine members being present, we have a quorum and are prepared to go about our work for the evening. The first item, the next item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations, which I will do in that order. So I just have one critical announcement kind of directing traffic for the evening. We are beginning, needless to say, extremely late because of the packed APW and PND Committee agendas that already took place this afternoon. We have a very packed agenda ahead of us as well. And we have at least one item on that agenda that is both critical for the future of the city and also relates to several issues that are exemptions of the, of the, that are allowable reasons to go to executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, for instance, personnel. And so after public comment and before we take action on the subsequent issues on the agenda, I will request a motion from the committee to allow us to resolve into executive session to discuss those issues. I recognize that's an imposition on the public, and I apologize for that, but I think it's necessary, given both the hour and the seriousness of the issues before us. So I request the public's indulgence for that decision. With that, I want to make, to make public a proclamation that I've made, making September of 2021 National Suicide Prevention and Action Month. I'll just say that the pandemic has both clarified and simultaneously exacerbated a severe mental health crisis across our community, across our country. And tragically, that crisis has as one of its outcroppings the instances of numerous of people in our own community taking their own lives. And so the full proclamation can be found online. It ends by saying, therefore, I, Daniel Biss, hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the city of Evanston, and encourage all citizens to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and taking care of mental health and inquiring as to the well-being of family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate, and would certainly urge anyone in our community who is in need of help to seek that help, and urge anyone in the community who has in your circle those who you believe need help to help them access that help. This really is a crisis in our community. With that, the next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Public Announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. I have several announcements this evening. The first one is we're planning a special city council meeting in September to talk about affordable housing. That will be the third Monday meeting. There's not a regularly scheduled city council meeting, but we typically give an affordable housing update a few times a year, so this is the tentative or the planned date for that to occur. We also have an update on the Civic Center reopening. As many of you are aware, the Civic Center is open for all public meetings, many people present tonight, but just for the general public, if you didn't already know, the Civic Center is open for all public meetings, and people are welcome to come to the Civic Center to participate in public meetings. But the full reopening of the Civic Center will occur on October 18th. That is the day that we will have all of the public counters available and be open for business. We're doing some moves in between now and then in order to accommodate what's required under making sure that the spaces are safe and that residents and staff can be in places that accommodate what our current regulations are. So that is October 18th would be the full reopening of the Civic Center with staff planning to return somewhere around Labor Day. My third update is that we have Brad Cole here from the Illinois Municipal League to present our staff with the, and City Council with the All American City Award. Brad, please take it away.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Brad Cole. I'm the Executive Director of the Illinois Municipal League. Separate and distinct from that, I also happen to serve as a board member of the National Civic League. It's my privilege to join you this evening. It's a pleasure to be back here at the Evanston City Council, but it's my privilege to join you this evening to help you celebrate and commemorate being named a 2021 All America City. Now in its 72nd year, the All America City Award recognizes and celebrates the best in American civic innovation. The award, given yearly to 10 communities, recognizes the work that those communities do using inclusive civic engagement to address critical issues and create stronger connections among their residents, businesses, nonprofits, and government leaders. The 2021 award theme was building equitable and resilient communities. As such, the 2021 awards recognize communities that have worked to improve equity and resilience. Evanston first submitted an extensive application, which described three projects around this theme, as well as the strengths of the community's civic capital. We call that the formal and informal relationships, networks, and capacities that enable communities to solve problems and thrive. Evanston's application was reviewed by a panel of civic engagement, resilience, and equity experts from across the country. The committee found Evanston's application to be strong in the areas that were necessary, and Evanston was invited to make a more formal application as a finalist. That was then presented, the city then presented to a jury made up of government, nonprofit, and business leaders, featuring the projects that Evanston was proud of, including the Restorative Housing Reparations Program, the Evanston Cares Network, and the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. I'm happy to say that the jury was very impressed with how, and I quote, "forward-thinking and seeking bold solutions," the city was, how it was focused on equity, and also quoting, "shows demonstrable impacts to the community," end quote. Ultimately, the jury felt that the application and presentation were exceptional, exceeding the criteria established for recipient, and the National Civic League was happy to designate the city of Evanston as a 2021 All America City. It's my honor to present this plaque in recognition of that to the mayor, City Council, and those involved. I might say, once an All America City, always an All America City, so you can display this proudly and properly identify the city of Evanston as an All America City. So congratulations. So, I think we...
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. And I would just like to point out, several city staff members were integral in our application being selected for this very fantastic award, and that includes Kimberly Richardson, Audrey Thompson, Tashikur, Callie Sadler, Nathan Norman, and Shanika Hoenkirk. So my appreciation goes out to all of the staff members who helped us achieve this, and thank you, Brad, for coming.
Just at the risk of interjecting myself in this part of the meeting, I just want to echo the City Manager's appreciation and congratulation of our staff, both for this remarkable reward, award, recognition of the work they do, but also simply for the real work that went into putting the city in a position where we were eligible for an award like this. So thank you to all of the staff who the City Manager mentioned, almost all of whom were standing up here to receive the award, and again, for everyone who did really remarkable work for which we're getting this recognition, that as I was looking with Brad at the list of communities given this recognition this year, there's only one in the state of Illinois, there's really only a handful across the country, it's something for all of us to be proud of. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
And my last announcement is that our Health Director, Ike Ogbo, is here this evening to give the community an update on COVID-19. Ike, please share your latest observations on where we are.
Good day, members of the City Council. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department, here to provide updates to our COVID situation here in Evanston. For those who are not aware, we provide weekly COVID updates on the city's website, precisely on our COVID page under Communication Updates. So as it stands currently, Evanston has over 4,500 cases from the beginning of the pandemic up till now. The pandemic in Evanston actually started mid-March of last year and continues. In the past four weeks, we've actually seen an increase in cases in regards to COVID-19 and of course, our positivity rate. So that is a major concern, even though our positivity rate is low, but we've actually started to see a rise in cases. Our debt toll remains pretty much steady at this moment. We haven't had any debts in Evanston since May of this year, so that's a positive result, and we want to keep it that way. I've provided a diagram which illustrates the individuals or the race that have been impacted or infected by COVID-19. We have whites at 42%, followed by African-Americans at 20%. We do have a section where it says other, about 15%, and a section where it says, where it states 17%, which is unknown. So these are COVID cases by age, and as you can see, the most infected are those between 20 and 29, which is the reverse, because at the beginning and in the middle of the pandemic, we had our older adults who were infected the most and who died the most due to this pandemic. And this is not just an issue specific to Evanston, this is an issue that is specific to a number of other municipalities in this group being the most infected. Also, I've provided some ethnicity data there, which illustrates about over 80% of those who identified as non-Hispanic, and about 14% of Hispanic individuals who tested positive or infected by COVID-19. That's by age. As you can see, those who are over 60 and above died mostly due to infections related to COVID-19, and according to CDC, 80% of individuals who are 65 and older, who are most vulnerable to this disease, will perish due to the disease, which is unfortunate, due to them being vulnerable to it. And as you can see, we have whites who are leading in the debt toll, unfortunately, and we have African-Americans and others come along. So this is a very important data to us because we continue to embark on surveillance and monitoring. We realize that an explosion of cases in nearby communities would definitely affect Evanston, because Evanston is northern island. But if you look across the indicators, you can see that Evanston is far in slightly better than Skokie and Chicago. So this is something that we monitor on a daily basis, and this formulates the way in which we respond to COVID-19. Last week, Evanston entered what we call a substantial transmission category, and in order to fill in this bucket, you have to have a transmission rate of 50 to 99 individuals per 100,000 of a population set over a seven-day move in average. So at this point, we are at 81, just right below Chicago, and you can see Skokie is in a high transmission category. And that's why it's imperative for us to continue to apply and abide by the public health directives that we have been doing ever since this pandemic, and that's why we are pushing vaccinations as well, because it's one of the tools that will get us through or control this pandemic. So the Delta variant has been on the lips and minds of many people. One, because people who aren't vaccinated have severe illnesses due to COVID-19 and the Delta variant. And not only that, the Delta variant actually transmits twice as much than any other variant, so you can see that this is a major concern. But looking at our data and our report, we only have three cases in Evanston. The total of Illinois has probably about 1,300 cases of the variant. So this is something that we are watching closely, because it's a major concern, and not only is it a concern for those who aren't vaccinated, it's a concern for those who are fully vaccinated, because the variant, the Delta variant can also be transmitted into people who are fully vaccinated, who can also transmit the virus to other individuals. The mask guidelines, I get a lot of questions about what is our recent mask guideline. So anyone who's two and over, irrespective of vaccination status, should wear a mask in the following settings: K through 12, public indoor settings, city facilities, community centers, public transportation, car and get homes, long-term care facilities, and healthcare settings. Vaccinations. We're doing pretty well in vaccinations. You can look across the U.S., across Chicago, Illinois, to see that we are far in better. As it stands, we're at 79% of those who have been fully vaccinated. 85% of those have received the first dose. Our target is actually 90%. It sounds farfetched, but I think we can do it. I think our community members have believed in science, believed in evidence-based data to travel far and wide, even when vaccines were so scarce, to get vaccinated. So this is very important to us. And as you can see, those who are 65 and older are 95% fully vaccinated, and the highest group there is 70 to 90, and 20 to 29, 60%. So we will continue to put out our messaging of pushing vaccination and encouraging that group to get vaccinated. Next steps. Contact tracing. Contact tracing is a major feature in lessening disease burdens and preventing diseases in Evanston. As we perhaps remember, we established our contact tracing program a week prior to us getting those two cases in March of 2020, and it's been instrumental in the way that we're responding to COVID-19, and it is something that we're going to continue to embark on. Community vaccinations, including home vaccinations. As we know, we had two centralized locations, the Levy Center and Blomkwest, thanks to Northwestern who provided that facility for us. But we decommissioned Northwestern's Blomkwest location due to the less demand for the vaccines, given that vaccines are widely available at this time. So we've shifted our focus to community-based vaccination efforts, where we're going to community events for vaccinations. We went to one, was it two weekends ago? There's another one that we're going to this coming weekend, and in subsequent weekends. Home vaccinations is a hallmark of the program, where we go to homes of individuals who are sick, who have disabilities, who have mobile issues, who can't come to any vaccination site to get vaccinated, so that's been great. So we're working with IT, because we don't want to go blindly into communities and start vaccinating. We want to, and we want it to be driven by data of places pinpointed as low vaccination areas, so that we can employ our vaccination strategies and attract people to get vaccinated. Social services is something that we're going to continue doing. At the height of the pandemic, in the beginning, we were providing individuals with housing. We were providing individuals who were isolating or quarantining at home with food and other immunities needed. Situation awareness, this is very important. Prior to us receiving those two cases in 2020, we maintained situational awareness a month prior to that, and I think that put us in a better position to respond to COVID-19. So information that is current today might be obsolete in the next two days, because information continuously changes when it comes to protocols and recommendations in this COVID world. On-site visits. It is a very important feature of our program, and I think it was very instrumental in the way that we employed infectious disease control measures at our at-risk facilities, our long-term care facilities, and car and get homes, and it's something that we will implement. And the reason why we, of course, do these onsite visits is to make sure that what's conveyed over the phone via email or via Zoom calls are implemented effectively and executed well at these facilities. So that wraps up my update. If there are any questions, I'll be here to answer.
Councilmember Reed, for a quick question.
Yeah, I'm just curious about, I hope I didn't miss it, you said our transmission rate is lower than Skokie, it's lower, a bit lower than Chicago. Well, what about our testing rate? Are we testing just as much as these other communities, or?
Well, our testing rate, in comparison to all the communities, is quite, I mean, when you compare it to Chicago because of its size, but if you compare it to communities of our size, we are doing quite, quite well.
Just like a per capita?
Well, it's actually decreased with the vaccinations. We've seen a decrease in vaccinations, but I can get you the exact data, if that's what you want, send that to me in an email or so.
I'm just curious how that factors into our transmission rate. If testing is lower, it's kind of like what Trump said a while ago, if we didn't test, we wouldn't have. So I'm wondering, are we going to be kicking up, where are places that folks, you know, I would like to go get tested again, so where are places that folks can get tested in Evanston for free, if possible?
Absolutely, yeah. So testing is available, is amply available at CVS, at pharmacies, where you can actually get tested, and that's where we recommend people to get tested. You can also test at your medical provider's office. Testing is a NASCAR, as it was in the beginning of the pandemic. Now they have various tests that you can take. You have the antigen test, you have the NAT test, you have the PCR test, that you can definitely take advantage of.
Are these tests free?
Typically, they are free.
And then are, would you suggest that, is the mask mandate in effect, or should the council take action to reinstitute a mask mandate?
No, it's in effect. Through ordinance, the Public Health Office has given the authority to provide guidance when it comes to any type of mandate or recommendations needed to navigate this pandemic.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ike. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Next is communications from the city clerk.
I'm only acknowledging received emails that have been sent to all the city council members, from Lynn Gellman, former mayor Steve Hagerty, and Peter Medwell.
Thank you. This brings us to public comment, and because of the large number of people seeking to give public comment, each speaker will have one minute. That's brutal. I recognize that, acknowledge that on the front end, but again, given the hour and the seriousness of what we've got to make good decisions about later tonight, I am going to hold folks to that one minute, and I ask for everyone's cooperation in making that work. I know in the past, I've been hard to hear for folks commenting on Zoom, so I'm just going to yell, and it's going to be terrible. With that, we'll, as always, begin with comments from individuals who signed up in person, beginning with Peachy and Greco.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Peachy and Greco live in the 4th Ward, lived in Evanston for 23 years. My wife and my kids are all born in Evanston Hospital, graduated from ETHS, so we love this city, and we couldn't be more proud of the All American City Award. And it just seems pretty ironic that after this staff has shown such an exemplary, nationally-recognized staff, that this council's reaction is to get rid of Erica Starley. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Erica has served this city for 16 years. She not only made this award possible, more importantly, she ran the city as a smart manager, problem solver, who had no political agenda. So the question is, who's next? We're down a police chief, we're going to lose a city manager, I understand Darf Fransano is gone, we have city council members who, police staff, who treat them terribly. So the question is, are we going to have an interim city manager? Are we doing this on the fly? Is there, are we going to hold up a national search for six months, like it happened last time? Is there a secret plan? A little transparency would help.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Malika Gardner.
Before you start my time, can you hear me through the mask? Okay. A minute is short, Mayor Biss. There's a lot going on, but I get it, I get it, I get it. Okay, my name is Malika Gardner. Good evening to the city council. This is my first time speaking in person, but I felt it's time, it's so much going on in our city. First, I want to say, with what happened at the last city council, me as a woman, and there's a lot, I don't think that there's a woman in this room or watching on the camera on TV that doesn't understand what it's like to be raped, molested, sexually assaulted, and sexually harassed in the workplace. We all have felt that. So in the last council meeting, all the person, Melissa Nguyen, when you took that opportunity, I just knew that you were going to speak to the women, because there's already a trust issue.
15 seconds.
There's already a trust issue in this city. You took that opportunity to attack this man with false accusations, and you're an attorney, so you knew the wording that you were using was violent and verbal towards him. He did not assault, sexually assault women, and you know that.
Your time is up.
You know that. There's a trust issue in this town, and if she does not give a public apology
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
...for assaulting him in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
The trust issue is going to deepen. And I know Bobby wants to pass the TIF, the 5th Ward TIF. If you don't start showing us that there's some control.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
He will not get that support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask folks to cooperate. I know these are difficult issues that cannot be addressed fully in one minute, but we've, we need to treat everybody, everyone needs to be given that time, and that requires each of us to make some sacrifice. The next speaker will be Sebastian Nalls, followed by Bennett Johnson, and after Mr. Johnson will be Denise Barreto.
Good evening, everyone. As a grassroots organization that represents a wide swath of Evanston community, Alliance for Better Government, CABG, calls for an open process in pursuit of a city manager who is committed to dismantling policies, programs, and practices that embedded favoritism based on race, class, and neighborhood. The first step of such a process is the removal of the confidentiality clause of city manager Storley's separation agreement. The independent investigation report into sexual misconduct allegations should be made available to the public in full, with redactions of personal information pertaining the survivors of the alleged misconduct. Any pre-commitment of confidentiality before results have arrived will only further mistrust. We call on city council members to remove the confidentiality clause, and if necessary, veto by Mayor Biss.
15 seconds.
I'm not going to have enough to go through the rest of it, but please, fulfill each and every one of your campaign promises, because I went through every single one of your campaign websites, that we are here in order to preserve transparency and accountability in local government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bennett Johnson, followed by Denise Barreto, and then Ray Friedman.
Mayor Biss, members of the city council, fellow citizens, I want to talk to you a little bit about public policy and public service. I've been involved in politics more than seven decades, starting in Los Angeles and working against the Daily Machine for decades. Public service means just that, you are public servants, and your leadership skills should be based upon your public policy, not your personal policy. And it's important that you realize, I mean, one problem, of course, in a group like this, is collegiality, you develop relationships, friendships.
15 seconds.
Influenced by others. So I just recommend strongly that you use public policy and public philosophy, democracy as your guide, not what you want personally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Denise Barreto, followed by Ray Friedman, and then we'll go to those who signed up online.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of you. I'm Denise Barreto, 800 Elgin Road, First Ward. I want to thank you all for serving and stepping up to serve, especially in this climate and what's happening. I am coming to you as a radical. Ask anyone who serves with me on the Parks and Rec Board, and I'm alarmed and disappointed at a pattern I'm noticing of this council. We can say transparency and exclusivity while doing things that are obscure and exclusive. Tonight, I am talking about the city manager and the movement around how we govern in Evanston. Before the election, some Evanstonians sounded the alarm, and while I don't agree with how they raised the issue, it's now clear that they weren't making it up, and they were not
15 seconds.
Making boogeyman's. And so I would appreciate if you all would make a process that is inclusive and has broad community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, and after that, when we go to those who signed up online, the first two will be Almardo Bicalo and Kirk Klimko.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, you're making a farce out of public comment. Public comment, once again, is supposed to be a dialogue, creating a dialogue with residents. You've ignored that. SP1 should be a meeting all by itself. If it's important enough to have a recess for you to have your session and then make the residents wait, no, that should be a meeting by itself. By the way, when are we going to continue the TIF hearing that is required by law? We haven't done that. This is, this is not the way the government's supposed to be run. It's supposed to be run for the people, by the people, and of the people. This is not how it's done.
15 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speakers are, the next speaker is Almardo Bicalo, who signed up to speak in person, but maybe in the Zoom, and after Almardo will be Kirk Klimko, followed by Dr. Michael James, Reverend Dr. All right, moving down the list, the next speaker is Claire Fisher, followed by Jane Grover, and then Isaac Slevin. Let's hear from Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Madam Clerk. Evanston has a new mayor, a new council, and you have new opportunities. Congratulations first on the All-American City Award, and thank you for your service. No such thing as too much gratitude, and you don't get enough thanks. To those new opportunities, you've been on the job together now for three months. I hope that your work together as legislators, not managers, will include development of a cohesive and explicit vision and plan for the city and its government, and that you will involve the community in that vision and share it, including any ideas of changing the form of government. Tell us if that's what you're aiming for. Please develop a vision and plan to help maintain our bond ratings or improve it, attract business development, give a clear signal to city staff on where city government is going, and to support their good work, and to affirm a commitment
15 seconds.
To good government, including the unsexy business of paying down the pension obligation, passing a balanced budget on time, maintaining infrastructure, including pavement markings, and recruiting and retaining the best talent for the city of Evanston, including high-caliber city manager candidates, in an inclusive national search. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker who signed up online to speak in person will be Isaac Slevin, followed by Molly Hartenstein. Go ahead.
Hi, all. My name is Isaac Slevin, Third Ward resident since I was two, and so last year, 56 lifeguards, including my neighbors, my friends, delivered a mandate to the city and to council. They said, and I quote, "apologize directly to survivors, their families, and all lakefront employees for consistently placing underaged employees in oppressive, uncomfortable, and close proximity with sexual predators." That is the mandate that the city has had to respond to. But instead, we've seen an agreement, a separation agreement, that leaves us with the city with no possibility to explain why city manager Storley is leaving, and with no ability to later explain the role that manager Storley had
15 seconds.
In this situation. So I implore to you, what kind of city do you want to build? Do you want to respect survivors? Do you want to hold city members to account? Do you want to take this opportunity to turn over a new leaf? Or do you want to engage in the same situations that left you in this mess to begin with? So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Molly Hartenstein.
Hello, my name is Molly Hartenstein. I'm a Fourth Ward resident, and I'm here on behalf of Evanston Fight for Black Lives. The mutual separation of city manager Erica Storley is reminiscent of the forced resignation of police chief Demetrius Cook just a few weeks prior. Don't get me wrong, EFBL and I have had many problems with these individuals. We're not sorry to see them go. Both of them were obstacles to change the systems of accountability for police and enlarge city processes that are so necessary to building community trust, as we can see in the issue at the beaches. Both of them don't see the need for the city to grow and change with the needs and wants of its people. They were more interested in preserving their interests, which is why they chose to accept resignation and severance. They should both leave and be replaced. But when they leave under the veil of secrecy, when the city continues to withhold information important to citizens to protect itself, there can be no accountability
15 seconds.
For anyone involved, and nothing changes. Instead of using these resignations as an opportunity for growth and to better reflect the needs of citizens, the city has doubled down on its self-serving and self-righteous behavior. Along with calling for the project to defunding Devon's Police Department with the eventual goal of abolition, EFBL has always been emphasized the importance of government transparency, and we emphasize that now as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the many people who signed up online to give comments online, beginning with Patrick Keenan Devlin, who will be followed by Kimberly Suisea and Karen Courtwright.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, council. I am Patrick Keenan Devlin. I am a Third Ward resident, and I also serve as the executive director of the Moran Center. And I realize that the council is deliberating several weighty issues tonight, and I just want to call special attention to the second item on tonight's agenda, 79R21, and establishing Evanston's Guaranteed Income Pilot Program. This one-year pilot aims to provide randomly selected residents with $500 monthly payments over 12 months, payments that would be made to an equal number of residents from three categories, 18- to 24-year-old, senior citizens, over 62-years-old, and undocumented residents. And as a practitioner in our community, I just want to say that this program could be truly transformational in alleviating poverty in our
15 seconds.
So I would just urge the council to seriously deliberate that, this proposal, and to support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kimberly Suisea, followed by Karen Courtwright, and then Barbara Janes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much. I've been a resident of the Second Ward here in Evanston for five years, but Evanston is also the town where my mother, aunts, uncles, and grandfather were born and raised. So it's always been a place of significance for me. This has felt like a community where we could make some real progress towards our collective goals of racial, social, and gender equity. I'm here today, however, because I'm very concerned that our elected officials are taking us in the wrong direction. So I would just want to make three quick points. First, our civic discourse has become incredibly unconstructive, fueled in part by misleading, uninformed, limited, and sometimes incorrect information about city governance that our elected officials do not challenge, clarify, elaborate, or correct. Second, the mandate of the city council is to lead our city through policy innovation and ensure that city staff have the direction and support they need to implement the council's policies. Efforts to micromanage and publicly undermine city staff does little to innovate and set new policies to keep us moving forward, and instead erodes the foundations for trust in this community. And Erica Storley's resignation is a really major and unfortunate casualty of this trend towards accepting narratives without basic due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Karen Courtwright, followed by Barbara Janes, and then Robert Shivers.
Hi, I'm Karen Courtwright, and I've been a resident of the Eighth Ward for about 35 years. I had some excellent conversations with lifeguards over the last week or so, and I heard amazingly consistent commentary. Here are the key points. While terribly overworked, they recognize that they are understaffed because of the change in beach access, and they expect things to be better next year, but they were also understaffed last year. One thing that was mentioned by several of the lifeguards I spoke with was that there is harassment that goes on in training, sort of like hazing, that diminishes their ability to recruit lifeguards. People just don't want to put up with that kind of treatment.
15 seconds.
And the supervisors who are implicated in this kind of behavior are the same as the creepy supervisors in the sexual harassment issue. That will be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Barbara Janes, followed by Robert Shivers, and then Mike Vasilko. Is Barbara Janes in the Zoom? Oh, okay. Sounds like she's there. Can you hear us, Ms. Janes?
I am here.
Perfect. We can hear you.
Okay. I am absolutely appalled at the city council creating a situation in which the city manager, who has done an incredible job guiding Evanston through the pandemic, and having her to resign. She deserves the citizens' gratitude and respect of all Evanston's residents. And to say that the lifeguard situation is the trigger is totally specious. And I'm wondering why I didn't get, and other people did not get, the agenda this week. And I'm wondering what's going on? And in all this turmoil, what's going to happen
15 seconds.
To the quality of life issues that really make a difference to Evanston residents? You guys got to get your act together and look out for the citizens and not for your own private interests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Robert Shivers, followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Bernard Citron. Sounds like he's not in the Zoom right now, so let's move ahead to Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Bernard Citron, and then Diane Goldring.
Good evening and thank you. To the contrary, I'm very happy, I guess would be the right word, that there's going to be a change in leadership within the staff. I also agree with a previous speaker about removing the confidentiality clause. There have been a lot of issues, serious monetary issues, and the lifeguard issue, among other things, under Ms. Storley's leadership. I thank her for taking the opportunity to leave. I don't want the mayor, though, to overlook another opportunity
15 seconds.
Which is to consider a different form of government. I sent an email about this, whether it's the strong mayor and council form of government or the hybrid that I mentioned in my other comments. I just want to also quickly say that
Your time is up.
The issue needs to be held or stopped entirely. There are too many unanswered questions that haven't been addressed. By FOIA request and by council member requests, the staff has not addressed
Mr. Vasilko, your time is up.
The issue under Erica Storley.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Bernard Citron, followed by Diane Goldring, and then Linda I think Mr. Citron isn't in the Zoom, at least for now, so we'll go on to Diane Goldring, followed by Linda Del Bosque, and then Misty Wittenberg.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Community Alliance for Better Government, against SP1, asking that you reject the separation agreement between city manager Storley and the city of Evanston. At the very least, the sentence that states, "The report and its contents are confidential and privileged and shall not be disclosed by the city unless required by law," must be deleted from the agreement. The outgoing city manager has absolutely no business preventing the report from being released publicly. It's highly inappropriate, and frankly suspicious, that the city manager, as a condition of her separation, would require that the report be kept secret before it's even written. Presumably, no one yet knows what the report is going to say. Regardless, the decision on whether to waive privilege and disclose a redacted version of the investigator's report
15 seconds.
Is of the city council, the people of Evanston's elected representatives, not the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Linda Del Bosque, followed by Misty Wittenberg, and then Megan Hughes.
Hi, good evening, council. Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So, good evening, council, Alderman, mayor. I just want to echo what Ms. Gardner had said. I'm taken back by how Alderman, Nguyen, I believe that you owe Alderman Reed an apology. Instead of acknowledging the survivors, you went straight at him with your personal agenda. I think it's unacceptable, and that is no way to lead not only your ward, but be an example to leadership for our community members. It's unacceptable. And what has taken place in 2019 is taking place in 2019. You, as a leader, need to address what's going on respectfully for our survivors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Misty Wittenberg, followed by Megan Hughes and Bill Johnson.
Hi, I'm Misty Wittenberg, Fifth Ward. I'm also echoing Ms. Gardner and calling for council to censure Alderman Nguyen, and I've emailed you Council to censure Alderman Winn. And I've emailed you information, so I won't rehash all of that. I also wanted to touch on one other issue. The city provided that it hired a firm to conduct an independent and impartial investigation of matters related to alleged misconduct of the city lakefront staff. None of that is reflected in the contract, at least the version I received this afternoon. The contract says the city hired the firm to represent the city in connection with the city's investigation. The scope of the representation is redacted as attorney-client privileged or based on off-record conversations with a city's attorney. That city's attorney has informed me explicitly that he does not believe persons who file complaints with the city are entitled to due process or impartiality.
15 seconds.
So my questions are that, is the firm retained regular outside counsel or independent counsel? Is it the city or firm that's investigating? If the latter, is it purely a fact-finding investigation or to provide legal advice and specification of litigation? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Megan Hughes, followed by Bill Johnson, and then Nicholas Long.
Hi, I'm Megan Hughes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, well, thank you. I want to thank this new City Council for everything that they've gone through and had really dumped on them by the previous administration. However, I agree entirely with, I want to apologize to Councilmember Reed for the treatment he endured, and also to thank him for being, I think, the only person who's publicly apologized to the 56 women. I did want to ask about this confidentiality statement. I don't know, is anybody willing on the Council to say if that is really saying that we will not ever read that report?
15 seconds.
Right now, is anybody willing to say that? No? Okay, I am asking that because I checked into it with some attorneys, and they said it wouldn't hold up at all. So, you know, I also talked to some of the council members, and they said they weren't sure, you know, they didn't think it was the confidentiality clause. So, but all the way through, it's very confusing to read this, and I don't think it should be approved tonight the way it is. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speakers are Bill Johnson, followed by Nicholas Long, and then Betsy Wilson. Looks like Bill Johnson may have dropped off as well. So let's go on to Nicholas Long.
Yes. With regard to the separation agreement with Ms. Storley, I do not understand the basis for the separation agreement in the first instance. I do not know her. I do not know her work. But I do know, based on reading her employment agreement, that there is a colorable argument that she could be terminated for willful breach or habitual neglect of her duties, and that she is responsible for both supervisory authority over the departments and maintenance of records, which this petition would consider. So I would ask the Council to consider eliminating the separation agreement in the first instance. In the second instance, I would ask that the confidentiality agreement, or the confidentiality provision, be stricken, as many before me have already said. And in the third instance, I would point out, even if you were to proceed with this document, as it's drafted, there are some serious drafting errors in it, and the fact that the report is not even defined as a report, and therefore it needs to be reviewed by City Council before it is signed, as it is inaccurate as drafted. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Betsy Wilson, who will be followed by Jesse Rojo and Nazaria De Jesus.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm speaking today on behalf of Evanston 2, an organization of people in the community who are horrified by the allegations of sexual harassment and the city's entirely inadequate response. Tonight, I would like to speak out about the plain language of paragraph 2, the secrecy provision in the Storley agreement. The plain language of that paragraph presents any disclosure of information resulting from the promised investigation. It allows no disclosure of a report, no disclosure of an executive summary, and not even the discussion of the results with the public. That's untenable. When this investigation is done, I hope that the Council decides to waive all privilege and disclose everything except information about the survivors. But even if the Council decides to keep more information than that confidential, the time to make that decision is not now. It's at the end of the investigation. Finally, if a new severance agreement or a modified document is proposed, the Council must give the public time to examine it, evaluate it, and communicate with their council representative about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jesse Rojo, followed by Nazaria De Jesus, and then Gabe Karsh.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Rojo, an organizer with Kofi, Community Organizing and Family Issues. And I actually signed up in order to give my time to Nazaria De Jesus and translate for her. So would it be okay to give my time to Nazaria so that I can well translate for her?
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Shaya, por favor. Shaya, todavía estás en mute. Apologies, everyone.
Hola, muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Nazaria de Jesús, madre de cuatro hijos. Vivo en el tercer barrio de Evanston. Para pagar mis facturas tengo que limitarme constantemente buscando todos los cupones y ofertas especiales posibles. Tengo que mantener a mis hijos en casa para ahorrar. Mis hijos no pueden tener todo lo que merecen, no pueden salir a la piscina, al cine, nada de eso. Todas las cosas que quiero proporcionar, las cosas que cualquier madre quisiera proporcionar, no podemos tenerlas.
Good evening. My name is Nazaria de Jesús, a mother of four who lives in 3rd Ward of Evanston. To pay my bills, I constantly have to limit myself, searching for every coupon and special possible. In order to save money, I have to keep my kids at home inside letting them go to the pool, the movies, or anything. All the things that I want to provide, the things that any mother would want to provide, they can't have.
Un ingreso garantizado sería de gran ayuda. Esto sería de gran ayuda para las madres que trabajan y no trabajan. Y en cambio, se quedan en casa para cuidar a sus hijos como yo, ya que el cuidado infantil costaría más de lo que yo ganaría trabajando. Me ayudaría a pagar mis facturas, la ropa de mis hijos, me haría pagar de mis padres ancianos que apenas pueden pagar la jubilación, y ayudaría a mis hijos. De muchas otras formas podría llevarlos a un museo un fin de semana, dejarlos disfrutar más de su infancia.
So before you translate, I'll just say, you're at 15 seconds left. Could you translate that portion, and then bring it to a close? Great.
That's the last section, Mayor. I'll go ahead and translate that. A guaranteed income, or even a guaranteed income pilot program, would be a huge help. This would be a huge help for mothers who don't work and instead stay home to care for their children, mothers such as myself, since childcare would cost more than what I would make working. It would help me pay for my bills, close for my kids. It would help me care for my elderly parents who can barely afford retirement, and help my kids in so many other ways. I could take them to the museum, and we can let them enjoy their childhood. A guaranteed income would be a blessing that would let me be happy and let me bring my children happiness beyond measurement. Thank you, City Council. Gracias, Nazaria.
Thank you very much to both of you. The next speaker is Gabe Karsh, followed by Elizabeth Drake, and then Sabrina Fisher.
As some other folks have said, the confidentiality clause in City Manager Storley's severance agreement is ridiculous. Mayor Biss, you wrote in a July 22 Facebook post, quote, "I am committed to full transparency with the community as we go through this process." Well, the community expects you to stick to your word. The people of Evanston need to know what happened on our lakefront so that we can ensure that all those that are held accountable, that all those that are at fault are held accountable. Frankly, it's unacceptable that the agreement as written is even on the agenda. Why does the city staff seem to be operating under the assumption that the report will be kept confidential, especially if they don't know what's going to be in it yet? Lastly, I understand if you have to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, but then it is not fair to the public for you to embed other items into the item being voted on.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Elizabeth Drake, followed by Sabrina Fisher, and then Ann Radacek. So it looks like Elizabeth Drake may not be in the Zoom. Is Sabrina Fisher in there?
Hello, I am Sabrina Fisher. Erica Storley, your resignation is too little, too late. You have failed us, the city staff and Evanston residents. You not only failed to protect the 56 petitioners who brought the lakefront sexual harassment cover-up to light, you also willfully enabled and supported an abusive organizational culture within our city government. Your administration protects abusers while subjecting survivors to humiliating, dehumanizing, toxic environments while demanding they continue work under those intolerable conditions. In June 2020, one month before the lakefront petition was shared, you sanctioned an unethical, fabricated sexual misconduct investigation against three black city employees.
15 seconds.
Two who worked in your department and one who directly reported to you. When the results of the investigation were unfounded, the employees were systematically dismissed with the same silence, avoidance, and failure to accept responsibility. The rest of the city has seen you display with the lakefront case. You stood by and did nothing to protect them, as Councilmember Cecily Fleming abused her power of office by demanding the resources staff disport facts and break rules.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ann Radacek, followed by Cecile McHugh, and then Mary Rosinsky. Looks like Ann Radacek may not be in the Zoom either. So the next speaker then will be Cecile McHugh, followed by Mary Rosinsky, and then Joe Roth.
Hello, I'm confused. The occupancy and the ADU topics, are they not on the agenda for this evening?
They did not, they did not yet make it through the Planning and Development Committee, as I understand it, which would mean that they would not be voted on later tonight.
All right, thank you. I'll give it my time, then.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh. The next speaker then is Mary Rosinsky, followed by Joe Roth, and then Carlos Sutton.
Hi, my cameras doesn't seem to be going on, I don't think, but I'm talking regarding the separation agreement also. And I'm just saying, I would hope that the city will be completely open and transparent with the investigation report, and with the exception of anything that would violate the rights of the survivors and their privacy. We need to know who knew what when, because this is not an issue that's related only to one person. I think there were many people who knew something was going on and didn't step up and protect our children and our other employees, and that needs to stop. Without transparency, there will always be dark secrets, which like, to me, they're like a toxic fungus which grows in the darkness. But we need the light of truth so that the residents of Evanston can have a city that's truly run with integrity and rebuild the trust in our city government. On a less important note, I do want to say, I hope you vote against the A13, the sale of, reducing the time notice to residents for the sale of public property, especially since 14 acres of public property is involved in a proposed TIF. But we can talk more about that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Joe Roth, followed by Carlos Sutton and Doreen Price. Looks like Joe Roth is also not in the Zoom, so we'll have Carlos Sutton, followed by Doreen Price, and then Nicholas Davis.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of City Council. I'm very concerned about the separation agreement with the City Council. It's about time we stop rewarding mediocrity and use those resources to help people who are really in need, like black landlords. Also, do not approve of any 5th Ward TIF plan that did not include citizen participation at the highest levels, which negates everything we want in our community and expedites gentrification. We don't need a bike park in Twigs. What we need is more transparency. What we need is to throw away that termination agreement with her and get to a city that we elected as a progressive, transparent city, not business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Doreen Price, followed by Nicholas Davis, and then Tina Payton.
Hi, Mayor Biss and the City Council. I agree with the speakers in terms of the need for transparency regarding the issues that go far deeper than just harassment of a sexual nature, but probably harassment in other ways. Harassers, people who harass willingly or unwillingly, can propagate something, and also, as a result of it, increase hatred. If you're harassed, you hate. If you hate, you cause problems. So it really is something that's intertwined in a system which needs to be fully addressed and not addressed in parts, pieces, or secret. And then the last suggestion is with regard to A16. I fully support a rewrite of A16.
15 seconds.
Okay, considering flooding to protect homeowners, especially low-income owners, that Jonathan could speak well in terms of social equity, which is not being, we're being commended for, but not, and this is a possibility of actually doing something about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nicholas Davis, followed by Tina Payton, and then Meg Welch.
Everybody, I'm talking on behalf of myself, as well as Evanston Fight for Black Lives tonight. So, well, for everybody else, the same with the separation agreement with Erica Storley. This is a problem that's kind of indicative of things that EFBL and other people, organizations, and individuals have been talking about for a long time as far as transparency. I'm sure this goes back before this, but to me, this is reminiscent of what happened with former City Manager Wally Bobkowitz, who amidst a scandal of racial discrimination, which he lost and caused taxpayers a half million dollars. He was allowed to leave in a similar way where he could resign. He was allowed to then go on to serve another municipality. I'm not sure what he's doing there, but this is a very, this is how you get the pattern of a lack of accountability from public officials. The same thing that happened with Chief Cook, where he was allowed to resign and separate, and now doing the same thing with Erica Storley, as everybody mentioned before. But this investigation isn't even finished yet. And I also challenge a lot of the members of this community.
15 seconds.
Don't understand why people are calling for her resignation, to really do some deep digging. And I also want to point out that in 2019, Portia Davis came forward as an employee and as a black woman, and she was ignored when she came forward with allegations of sexual assault and harassment that were rampant not only against her, but also that she witnessed in the city towards her from people who still work for the city, and as a city who said, "We're trying to build a livable city. We say Black Lives Matter, Me Too, and all that." We thoroughly ignored that when people needed it most, and so I'm hoping that we'll realize these mistakes and then correct them as they need to be corrected.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payton, followed by Meg Welch.
Good evening. Just received an All-American City Award. Which black businesses have received 100,000-plus grants, not loans, to help support or start new businesses that are not tied to white sponsorship or part ownership, except for the few that are your friends? Reparations should not be considered as equity, since no money's cash payments of $25,000 have been dispersed to senior legacy parties who have received harms in the past by the same people that you are giving the money back to. Equity is not giving some people bonuses for bad behavior when some people get violations, penalties, and court fines. This includes some items on the agenda today, as well as in the recent past. Equity is not the continued harassment against certain parties in this community, including me and my family. I'm sure I will have a series of code violations after my comments today. Black Lives Matter, always, not sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Meg Welch.
I'm a 4th Ward property owner, presently residing in California, but care very much about this community, and I do watch City Council meetings from afar. And I have been extremely dismayed to see council members disparage in tone, condescending, and just da-da-da-da-da, and blame-shifting and focusing Alderman Winn, who I used to have quite a bit of respect for. And as a mother of adolescents the same age as these women, I was stunned, I'm stunned at the comments that have been made online and by Pete about how we're supposed to just give people a pass because they've done great things for the city, and Erica has done some really good things for the city, but you don't get a pass. This is an extremely, as Mayor Biss said, and I completely agree, institutional failure.
15 seconds.
But I really would like Alderman Bray... But I really would like Alderman Braithwaite, and Alderman Winn, and some other people, we elected some of these aldermen. When you condescend and disparage them, you are disparaging and condescending us. We elected them. You are disparaging the people of Evanston. Stop the fact-twisting and have some respect.
Thank you. The bulk, so this concludes everyone who signed up. The bulk of the people who signed up and did not speak when called on. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm told that Diane Thodos signed up to speak, and I missed the name somewhere. Is that the case?
You did not miss the name, but she wanted to speak.
I'm a resident of the Seventh Ward, lifetime resident, and also a member of the Community Alliance for Better Government. And I want to begin my statement with saying the fish rots from the head down. And what we've seen is the previous city council and mayor and the pattern of impunity and disregard for public opinion and for decency in terms of how things were handled, in terms of attacks on Devon Reed is very specific to that. This is a pattern that has to stop, and I'm making a statement to put that down as a challenge. There were children who were assaulted by predators, and they will have perhaps a lifetime of problems with PTSD, if you're familiar with that. It's very serious. You know, if we want to have this progressive city status really stand up and not just be a hypocrisy, you have to withdraw this confidentiality agreement clause, and you have to come clean and stop the rot from the head down.
Your time is up.
Because the only way we're going to have trust with you is if there's transparency, and that ain't going to change. Get the job done.
Thank you very much. So as I was indicating, among those who signed up and didn't speak when called on, the great majority were, had signed up to speak on issues that didn't make it through committee. But so I'm going to call on those who are not in that category for another shot, and those are Almar Do Bucalo, Kirk Klimko, and Reverend Dr. Michael James. Are any of those individuals in the Zoom? Seeing that none are, that concludes public comment, and I would request a motion from council to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session. I don't have the law thing in front of me. Do I need to read all of that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, sorry. Pursuant to five, Illinois compiled statute 120-2A, I move that City Council convene to executive session to discuss agenda items related to personnel. This agenda item is permitted subject to be considered an executive session, and then as enumerated, exception under the Open Meetings Act, these exceptions are five ICL S-120-2C and are set forth as personnel.
Is there a second? Councilmember Fleming makes this motion. Councilmember Reed seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Oh, Councilmember Braithwaite? Okay, Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a vote of nine to zero, the motion carries. I would like to ask council to move swiftly so that we can begin immediately, and I just say to the public, we'll be back as soon as we can. Thank you. The Evanston City Council shall come back to order. So I want to thank, first of all, the public for their indulgence of what was, I think, an essential function of city government. It was very clear prior to our adjourning over to an executive session meeting, both from the discussion we heard at public comment, from the conversations that each of us have been having with our constituents, and frankly, from the back-channel discussions that have occurred internally, that there's a lot to talk through here. There are critical questions at stake, that the, that the stakes are enormous for our city government and for our whole community, for the trust between our city government and the community. And so the resolution that was reached was to decline to take action tonight, to instead spend a very limited amount of additional time to try to both reach an agreement that addresses some of the concerns that I know there are some people who currently have, and additionally, to ensure that that agreement would be put before the public for scrutiny and inspection prior to a vote. Because as everyone on this dais knows and believes, a decision of this magnitude that's made without meaningful public input is enormously risky for our whole community. So with that, the council has agreed to come back on Thursday evening. What I would request is a motion to table SP1 until Thursday evening, and we will be working as diligently as possible to achieve the critical goals of transparency, of fairness, of stability of our organization, and of public input between now and that time. So thank you again to everyone in the, on the council for your extremely robust participation in that discussion. Thank you to Ms. Storely for your, again, robust participation in this process, and for your leadership of our city government organization. And with that, I would accept, I would request a motion to, to.
I'll move to table.
Table to Thursday.
Table item SP1 until Thursday.
Is there a second? Councilmember Newsma moves to table item SP1 until Thursday, August 12, 2021. Councilmember Winn seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. On a vote of nine to zero, the motion passes, and we will, we will continue in this work immediately. With that, we come to item SP2. Would someone, would Councilmember Fleming like to make a motion regarding item SP2?
I move SP2, Resolution 79-R-21, authorize an allocation of ARPA funds in the amount of $300,000 for the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program for Action.
Councilmember Fleming moves SP2. Councilmember Winn seconds. City Manager Storely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, city staff and previous Mayor Hagerty worked with Northwestern University to come up with a set of ideas to propose for the Northwestern Racial Equity Fund, which is a part of the Good Neighbor Fund. One of those ideas put forward was the idea of a guaranteed basic income program, which the university and the city agreed to pursue as part of the donation for the current year. What you see before you tonight is a resolution. We discussed this briefly a couple weeks ago during the discussion on ARPA funding, and we seek your feedback regarding the proposal, and Councilmember Fleming can share any further details as it relates to the program design.
Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you. Dave Davis from Northwestern, I told him not to come because obviously it's super late. He's on Zoom if he's there, can turn his camera on to speak to this from Northwestern's side, but to give background, just for clarity purposes, Dave and I wrote the memo. We've been working on this for some time. When this came forward, through the announcement with the city, I did ask City Manager Storely if I could be involved, because I've been involved in some other programs. And so Dave Davis and myself have been working on this for quite some time, speaking to lots of professionals and so on and so forth about it. So essentially, the goal tonight is to ask for the funding allocation. The program design is in the memo, but we did look through three kind of buckets of people, understanding we cannot serve everyone in Evanston, trying to pick folks who needed the most service going into the pandemic and therefore still needed coming out of the pandemic. Ideal program, based on all the researches out there, particularly the Stockton program that has been heavily researched, is that $500 a month seems to be the amount of money that allows people to really try to make some substantial changes in their life and economic mobility, and that that money needed to be unrestricted as per guaranteed income programs, and also be over a 12-month period. So that is the design that we have used here, looking at our undocumented, as well as our senior citizens, as well as, I think we call them disengaged youth, but looking at the numbers of students we have who either are not graduating high school, who are working, you know, low-wage positions, or who are going even to college but coming back home after a year, and are kind of, you know, just not well-supported in our city for a variety of reasons. So those are the buckets. The goal would be to come back to this body with an actual application, with more information about the lottery system, and so on and so forth. Obviously, lots of public engagements to make sure that everyone in the city is aware of how to apply and, you know, how funds will be allocated. I will make some amendments to this, but I'm happy to have conversation first. There are a couple of things that I, that Mr. Davis and I think could be done better that were not quite in the memo that I would like to amend, but I will allow others to have discussion and input first. And I don't know, Dave, are you on the Zoom?
Yes, I am, Councilmember Fleming.
Okay, do you want to add the Northwestern standpoint or anything that I missed in that discussion?
No, I think you covered it quite well. I do want to just thank the mayor, city council members, clerk Mendoza, and the city manager for working closely with the university over the past year to really design a program that made the most sense for the unique needs of the city of Evanston. I also would be remiss if I just didn't take a moment to thank city manager Erica Storely. This was originally her idea. Early on, we hit a couple of roadblocks in determining what were the best programs and projects to fund. She suggested this as one of, not only a great solution, but also the right thing to do, and we agreed. Also, just want to publicly thank you, as well as Councilmember Fleming. You know, you and I, we've worked together very closely over the past several months to not only research the different programs and program types, but to also figure out what was the best design. And without your leadership, we wouldn't be where we are today. And so this is not a finished product by any means, but I think we're getting closer to something that I feel would be incredibly meaningful to some of the most vulnerable folks in Evanston. I mean, we understand that this pandemic has exacerbated the magnitude of the needs in this community, you know, specifically populations that are already struggling to provide for their basic needs. And again, although this program alone will solve all the challenges we face in Evanston, I am confident that this program will bolster Evanston's support system for this, again, very vulnerable population. And before I sign off, I just want to, you know, take a moment, and on behalf of the entire Northwestern community, to congratulate the city elected leadership, the city manager, and city staff on the recognition tonight as an All-American City. The award is a testament to the commitment and dedication of the public servants who work in Evanston, and the university is quite frankly fortunate to be located in a city like Evanston. And we look forward to working with you, the rest of the city council, and the mayor to continue to make Evanston one of the best places to live, work, play, and learn. So thank you again for providing me with this opportunity. Look forward to working with you more closely to get this program right.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you. Just a quick note, Dave. First, always thank you very much for your leadership and jumping into the water on this. We see that it's growing nationwide. We've actually adopted something similar using the guidelines for the reparations. So is there going to be any part of this? And I can't remember. I feel like I've read it somewhere, like Northwestern is going to measure the impact of this, and if so, just give me a couple of, give us a couple of soundbites on what that looks like from your lens.
Thank you, Councilmember Braithwaite. The one important component of this to get it right is to make sure that we have a research component or evaluation piece to the program. We're still working to identify the right person at the university that can help us to not only, you know, design the program fully, but also to do the evaluation. Again, so that we make sure that the payments are going to the right population, that we're assessed to the need, and that as we continue, hopefully, into the future with this program, that we can make sure that every dollar is being maximized. As you and the rest of the city council knows, the data suggests from the other cities around the nation that have implemented guaranteed basic income programs, universal basic income programs, that this is really paying off in spades and seems to be an incredibly effective way to reach people in need and to also address the issue of economic insecurity. So the university is committed to make sure this program works well, and it is truly helping, again, the most vulnerable population in Evanston. So we'll be here every step of the way, and we'll be sure to, you know, support this with the, all the intellectual assets that we can bring to the table and our full apparatus to make sure that we, again, are doing something special here in Evanston. So thank you again for that question, Councilmember Braithwaite.
I don't see anyone else asking to speak again for the first time, so in light of that, for your second time speaking, Councilmember Fleming, you have two minutes and 30 seconds left.
Thank you. So as I said before, there is an amendment that I'm going to be making here. Just want to explain, as we talked about best practices and the research and such, and the amount of money, there also, we would be approving this, we would be the first city municipality in the state of Illinois. The mayor is part of a mayor for guaranteed income, and there is lots of interest nationwide from private funders who have been helping municipalities get these off the ground. So we want to position this to be a viable pilot, so ideally, if we decide to move forward, we have some outside funds. So that said, I'm making a motion to increase the fund amount from the ARPA balance from 300,000 to, I'm sorry, where are my notes? 700,000, and the reason is, with that amount of money, that will put us at a flat million, and we could help 165 residents, again, coming out of three buckets of people, versus if we just had the 600,000, we'd help about 90 residents.
Second.
Second.
Can you send me the motion in writing, please, Councilmember? Or Senator, the whole council?
Yes. I forgot about that.
So just cross out 300 and put 700, and then we use the same line item.
I will again note that this.
I think it's additional 700 to bring it to a million, sir.
It's actually an additional, I'm sorry, it's an additional 400,000. I was wrong on my math. Thank you, Jonathan. It's an additional 400,000, so we'll bring our ARPA funds to 700,000 total. I'm sorry, I was wrong. We have to wait for me to do this?
Yeah. Point of information, I just, again, will highlight that this may be a non-productive rule that we have, when we're going from three to seven. We're just changing one number essentially. Have to type it up again and wait.
All right, and I'm not fast.
What did he say?
Okay, intent. I think it's ready.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming moves to increase the funding from 300,000 to 700,000, and Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Discussion on the amendment, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I support the initial proposal. I support Councilmember Fleming's amendment. I think UBI, as it's commonly referred to, guaranteed income in this instance, is a
I think UBI, as it's commonly referred to, Guaranteed Income in this instance, is a, is an amazing policy, and I'm looking forward to seeing the results. Thank you, Dave, for Northwestern and everyone else who's involved with this, Councilmember Fleming, for leading on this. I'm glad we're doing this, so I'm supportive.
Thank you. Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I'm supportive too. I just want to know officially, are we kicking ARPA off? Because I have, you know, some, some things that I'd like to move forward with as well. So I just, we're using ARPA money. We haven't had a discussion about process. We haven't really, we don't have clearly defined criteria. We don't know, we don't even know how much will be in what pot of money, how much, what initiatives and projects will council bring in this same manner versus what we was received from applications. So I'm 100% okay with voting on this today. I just want to make sure that we're saying that we can, you know, certainly, city council members can now bring forth projects.
Yeah, I think it's an awkward question. I mean, of course, the answer is yes. I think there's, everyone sort of wants to have a comprehensive strategy in place before spending a single dime. You know, the issue is, I think here, the issue is this program was initiated because of the Good Neighbor Fund. There's been a desire to find matching funds and a commitment, I think, from the city to find matching funds. There just was not another source of income available to do that. But I think that you're right. Once, once this vote occurs, you know, I think any member of council would be able to say, hey, listen, I'm going to try to do the same thing.
Councilmember Newsma.
That's kind of a good segue to, to my question. And I am supportive of this conceptually. I think this makes a lot of sense and can solve a lot of problems. But if we couldn't find money before ARPA, to uphold our end of the agreement here, what is our plan, assuming the pilot program proves to be successful, and it's something we want to continue in future years, where are we going to find that money when there's no longer any ARPA money?
So I don't know if that's really a question for me. You seem to be looking at me. I just want to be really clear. I did make the request, obviously, for ARPA money. I was not in the room when the conversation was had to do guaranteed program, I mean, guaranteed, right? So this is, so to be clear, it's not a Cicely-Fleming project.
Yeah.
I just offered and asked to be part of the project. I was happy to have money from wherever we had to have it. I just knew $300,000 was not going to suffice us actually calling anything a pilot, right? We were going to be helping like 25 people or something. So, you know, so, yes, I did advocate for more money. I was happy to have the money come from anywhere. Some municipalities did this with CARES Act funding. We did not do that. And then when the ARPA funding came around, again, because I was following this, other municipalities used it. It had less restrictions. And so that is why I made the ask. The city manager came forward and said that there was clarity that we could use rescue funds for that, and suggested the $300,000. So I am not opposed to people bringing their thing. I just want to be really clear, this is not the Cicely-Fleming project. And as I said before, having a viable pilot that is able to be, you know, studied, so to speak, does put us in a position where we could go out and look for other funding from these bankers and private investors who are funding these programs nationally.
So it does impose kind of a moral obligation on us to find funds somewhere in the future.
If we would like to continue the program.
They certainly will want to continue it. Right.
I think the city manager also wanted to respond to that. Is that, oh, sorry, I misread your mic. Again, no one else has already spoken, has their light on. So for a second time, Councilmember Reed, who has four minutes and 26 seconds left.
Yeah, I just, again, I support this, but again, this is about $700,000. I do want to remind us that earlier, we looked at another $4 million, or just about $4 million in ARPA. And so we're, so, you know, we're, we're already committing significant amounts of a very small amount of money. I mean, if you look at, if you compare what the $43 million is to our overall budget, it's, it's really not a lot of money that we're talking about. And so I support this. I'm going to move forward with it. I think we should be looking for a permanent way to fund this or something like it, particularly if it turns out to be what all the data has shown thus far, that it will be a successful program. I do have one, just a point, question relating to point of information. I'm just curious, and I meant to maybe ask this by email. How did this get on the agenda?
There'd been discussion between Councilmember Fleming, the city manager, and myself for quite a while about putting this on the agenda, kind of when, I think really when Councilmember Fleming and Dave and the team that had been working on it were ready to make the ask. And this is when that, this is, that's now.
And I just, so I just want to be sure. Mayor Bis, you place this on the agenda?
I mean, the simple answer pursuant to our rules, of course, is yes. I was, it was something that was discussed with me that I agreed to prior to appearing on an agenda.
Thank you. Seeing no further, councilmembers seeking to speak on this, would the clerk please call the roll on Councilmember Fleming's amendment to SP2?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Brathwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a vote of nine to zero, the amendment passes. Would the clerk call the roll on SP2 as amended?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Brathwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a nine-zero vote, SP2 as amended passes. And that...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mayor. Dave Davis wanted to say something, and he...
I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Dave.
We missed him.
Oh, no, I wanted to, it's irrelevant right now. I wanted to respond to Councilmember Newsma's important question about sustainability. And just to say that, you know, we're not the first to do this, and we are investigating to become part of, as Councilmember Fleming mentioned earlier, there's a coalition of mayors across the, across the nation that are providing technical assistance and funding for these kind of pilot projects. And also, we're learning that some of these projects and municipalities do receive philanthropic support, and also support from financial institutions. And so we're still working on a mechanism of how to fund these things more sustainably than what we have today. So we're hopeful that a year from now, if we have this conversation, we've identified different funding sources. But I did want to respond to that. So with that said, thank you for providing me with a few minutes to just, to respond. And thank you for your vote of support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. This brings us to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with AP and, well, you know what? Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Councilmember Brathwaite.
I need your help, but I'll wait until...
All right. So Councilmember Kelly, go ahead first.
You'll do the held ones?
Yeah. While you're looking, I'll just tell you quickly. So in administrative public works, item A6 and A7 was held in committee. I don't have A4 held, so you can hold that if you'd like. Yeah, yeah. So items A6 and A7 were held in committee, as well as A9.
Mr. Mayor, will you please hold, or please pull item A2 from the consent agenda?
And Mr. Mayor, from P and D, P6 was, was tabled. And, and P7 did not make it out of the committee, so it's removed from the agenda.
Councilmember Kelly?
And A15?
I'd like to remove A13 and A14.
Anybody else? So what I have right now is A2, A6, which didn't make it out at all, A7, which didn't make it out either, A9, which didn't make it out, A13, A14, and A15, P6 and P7, which didn't make it out. And let me pull off AP1 as well. Is there anything missing?
Oh, P5.
And P5. Now, did P5 make it out of P and D?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, it did, I believe. All right. So P5, understood. Okay. Any, anything else? So I have A2, A6, A7, A9, A13, A14, A15, P5, P6, P7, and AP1.
Can I add A10, please?
And A10. And did A10 make it out as well?
It did.
It did. Got it. Okay.
I'm sorry, and R1 as well.
And R1. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion that we pass the whole consent agenda except for A2, A6, A7, A9, A10, A13, A14, A15, P5, P6, P7, R1, and AP1?
So moved.
Councilmember Brathwaite moves that we pass everything but A2, A6, A7, A9, A10, A13, A14, A15, P5, P6, P7, R1, and AP1. Councilmember Fleming, seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Brathwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a nine-zero vote, the consent agenda passes. Councilmen, so that brings us to A2. Councilmember Brathwaite, would you make a motion on A2?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of city council, I'd like to move item A2, which is the approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity in the dollar amount of $8,557.56, ending in the month of May 26. It's for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Brathwaite moves A2. Councilmember Fleming, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Brathwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a vote of eight to zero with one abstention, item A2 passes. Councilmember Brathwaite, would you like to make a motion on A10?
Member, city council, I'd like to move item A10, which is Resolution 77-R21, approving ARPA grant funds for the water and parking projects. The dollar amount of the ARPA grant is $43,173,654, and the dollar amount that's being requested this evening is $3,950,000.
Second.
Councilmember Brathwaite moves item A10. Councilmember Nguyen, I believe, second. Is that right?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma.
I will support this. I ask for this to be held just because I want to acknowledge, as Councilmember Burns alluded to earlier, that we are getting a little bit ahead of ourselves in our ARPA process here. And we can make a strong financial argument for taking $3,950,000 of the ARPA money and applying it to infrastructure in this manner. And I think this is a result we probably would have ended up at eventually anyway. So I'm comfortable voting for it, that being the case. But I just do want to acknowledge that we are getting a little bit of, ahead of our skis in terms of our ARPA allocation strategy and public engagement.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
I'll just very quickly echo that, and to remind us that with this vote and the vote earlier, that we've spent about, we've spent about a fourth of this year's ARPA allocation already. So.
Point well taken. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Brathwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
On a vote of eight to one, item A10 passes. Councilmember Brathwaite, would you like to make a motion on A13?
Yep. Vice Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move item A13, which is ordinance 68-0-21, amending the city code 1-17-4-2, sale of real property. Staff recommends the city council's adoption of this ordinance, amending the city code to sale of real property. This is for introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Brathwaite moves A13. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I pulled this off. At the last meeting, Councilmember Kelly and I held this in order to ensure that some language is updated. I know we haven't had a discussion. I know we briefly talked about it, but we didn't have a full discussion. So I'm just hoping that by the time this comes back for introduction, the amendment that I would like to see is that in, in addition to posting it in a news article, whether it be the Tribune, or Sun Times, whatever, in a news publication, I should say, I think we should also create a webpage where we have, anytime we're selling real property of the city, that we post it there at the same timeframe. So there's a dedicated place that residents know that they can access this and, you know, maybe even sign up for a newsletter, similar to other actions. And so that's the amendment that I would like to make.
So are you making that amendment now?
I didn't know if anyone else wanted to talk, but I gotta write this down.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of a good example of why, actually, because I think this, there's, I don't, I guess not everybody here understood in detail exactly what you're saying.
Nope. All right. So we'll hold then.
I would be happy to work with Councilmember Reed between now and the next meeting to incorporate his suggestions and put them on the agenda for council's consideration at our next meeting, when this is for action.
Great. Thank you. And we'll look forward to that. Councilmember Fleming?
I have a question. So I know, remember, legal counsel was saying this is kind of the way it's written now, it's redundant, and they have to do this, these two postings. Was there a consideration made in terms of, you know, the perceived value of the land that we're selling? So I know we have all these things where we sell like an easement, so it's a little tiny sliver, and, you know, probably don't need to post that a bunch of times in the newspaper, because nobody even knows we own the sliver of land, versus something like the library, library parking lot, you know, something that's, that's bigger, that more people are going to pay attention to? Or was that too complicated in terms of having an ordinance where we have to post, you know, more times based on the perceived value or community interest in the land?
When we put this forward, the intent was to clarify the existing code. Right now, it's unclear exactly the steps that are to be taken, so the attempt was to make it clear. But we are happy to incorporate whatever council suggests and desires. We just haven't discussed it beyond the attempt at clarity.
Okay. And so that's just a thought of mine. I, you know, depending on what the other edits are that come back, it might be fine. But if it's a matter of not having to post everything, or, you know, unclear, I would also support if we wanted to break it up. If staff thought it made sense to break it up, so when we have those little alley pieces or whatever, we're not bothering with posting those twice in the newspaper. But that's not an amendment, it's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings?
I just wanted to point out that state law requires, regardless of the size of the real estate, we have to provide this notice. And so to the city manager's point, this was, this amendment was proposed to try and clarify when the city has to actually post that notice along the steps in the process. But whether it be an alley, or an entire building, or a park, we have to go through a process mandated by state law.
Thank you. Seeing no one else who would like to speak on this, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
I'm sorry, point of order, what are we voting on now?
We're voting on A3 with, sorry, A13 with no amendment.
For action.
All right.
Councilmember Kelly?
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. So Devon's amendment is, will be added?
So since he didn't put in writing beforehand, city manager is going to work with him between now and when it comes back for action, so we're just reading into introduction as is.
Okay, aye.
You're welcome.
She said aye, okay. Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
On an 8 to 1 vote, A13 passes, and we'll be back with an amendment for action in September. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion on A14?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to move item A14. This is for action and introduction. Ordinance 84-0-21, authorizing the sale of Evanston Fire Department, the 23-Mobile Scotty House. This is at the request of Alderman Sufferton.
I'll second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A14 for introduction and action. Can that occur in one motion? No.
It can, but you need to suspend the rules to allow for it to be done in introduction and action.
And that would have to happen before the motion?
Correct.
All right, so.
I can move suspension of the move, excuse me, I can move suspension of the rules for item A14 as read.
All right, so Councilmember Braithwaite moves suspension of the rules so that A14 can move forward for introduction and action.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Reed?
I'm willing, this is controversial, I only pulled this off because, again, we created a referrals committee that I wasn't supportive of, and, but as we adopted it as a council, and part of what we said is, everything that appears on the agenda is going to be going through this referrals committee, and this ordinance, which is coming for introduction and action, is one of a number of items on the agenda tonight that has not gone through the referrals committee. And if we have this rule where the legislative body, where the council members can't get something on the agenda without it going through this process, I think the, you know, folks were saying earlier, the folks who are critical of other things we're discussing tonight, that, you know, we are the legislative branch, that the city staff is the management branch and responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city, I want to make sure that those rules are being followed and applied equally across the board.
Okay.
Thank you. Seeing no further people seeking to speak, would you call the roll, please? Clerk Mendoza, on the motion to suspend the rules for A14?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a 9-0 vote, the motion passes and the rules are suspended. Now, Councilmember Braithwaite, do you want to remake your initial motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, again, this is requested, the rules by Councilman Sufferton, this is for introduction and action. Item A13 is ordinance 84-0-21, authorizing the sale of an Evanston Fire Department 2003 Mobile Scotty House.
And I will again second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves A14 for introduction and action. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
On a 9-0 vote, A14 passes for both introduction and action, and is therefore adopted. Councilmember Braithwaite, would you like to make a motion on item A15?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'd like, this is for action, I'd like to move item A15, which is ordinance 80-0-21, authorizing the 2021 general obligation bond issues not to exceed $18,500,000.
Second.
Councilmember Braithwaite moves item A15. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, I'd like to amend this ordinance, and I've already shared the wording with everybody here, including the clerk, so I would like to amend it. The bond ordinance makes a statement that, quote, "There being no funds on hand and allocable to such a purpose, the corporate authorities have determined it necessary and convenient to borrow the sum of $10,500,000 at this time pursuant to the act, and in evidence of such borrowing to issue general obligation bonds of the city, the CIP bonds for such purpose is not to exceed such principal amount." That's a, and so I want to note that the motor, we have approximately $15 million in unobligated funds, as the 2020 audited financial statement states, the city ended the year with the following balances, motor fuel tax fund, about $4 million, I'm rounding capital, the CI fund, about $10.5 million, and the special assessment fund at $500,000. And I did ask our CFO to please explain to me how these balances would be spent. I have not yet received that information. I also reached out to Chief Engineer Biggs on this. I still have not received the information as to how this will be spent. We are obligated as representatives to, you know, that we must be assured that there are no allocable funds, and we cannot, I cannot in good faith say that there are not $10 million funds available, this amount available to us based on this. On August 4th, Biggs sent to the council 2021 project list totaling $8.8 million, showing that 59% of the proposed CIP bond issue is obligated, with none of the projects being funded by the available balance in the funds listed above that I just mentioned. I cannot, and I don't think anybody here can in good faith, assert that there are no funds on hand and allocable to the 2021 capital projects, when we started the year with a $15 million in uncommitted funds that should, that should in fact be used for these projects. In addition, this is very important, the approved CI expenditure budget is for $7,755,000. So a budget amendment would be required for the city to spend an additional over $1 million, additional CI, exceeding the voted-on budget in '21. Staff needs to ask for an amendment to the CIP budget before they obligate residents to over $1 million of what was approved for the 2021 CIP. So any bonds issued in the 2021 should be used only to refund the 2012 bond series of $6,755,000 due after 2021, provided that we will in fact have a savings. Therefore, I propose the following amendment to the bond ordinance, to restrict it to a 10-year refunding of the 2012 series only, thereby removing the new money from this bond. So I'd like to amend ordinance 80-0-21 to reduce the maximum borrowing from $18.5 to $7 million, with the final maturity date of December 1st, 2031, 10 years instead of 20, to match the maturity of the remaining series of the 2012 bonds outstanding, and reduce the maximum interest rate from 6% to 2%. And I shared all this with everybody, along with a spreadsheet. So at this point, we, I don't think any of us, staff hasn't been able to either show me that there are, that these funds are not available through the, through the unobligated CIP funds right now. We have $10.5 million in the capital improvement fund, in the unobligated audited financial statement. I know, it's a lot of information, but it would not be responsible at this point, without knowing this, until staff can come forward and show me what the plan is to commit that almost $15 million of funds sitting in a bank, basically, of uncommitted or unobligated funds, to leverage debt.
So I see there's a light on, but first, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
So Councilmember Kelly moves to amend item A15 in a manner described in an email that she has sent the council, as well as the city manager and clerk. Councilmember Reed seconds. Councilmember Reed?
Is Hitesh on the line, or anyone from our budget?
And just while we're waiting, just for my own information, I apologize, it's the first time I'm seeing it, is this a document that was created, like, on our website, or is this one that was generated by someone else? I'm sorry, I can't see. I'm reading from my phone.
It doesn't say who the author is. No, I worked on this.
Are you talking about the ordinance itself?
No, no, so she shared some information, I was just trying to fact-check the figures, if it was something that was generated from our city staff, that's on our public website.
It was from both the website and put together for this purpose.
That's what I'm going to be using my time for, if we can get back on track.
Claire, is this, this is your work product?
Correct. Okay.
Okay. All right.
And we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't be, again, reducing 6% is a very high cap.
I'm sorry.
2% is really, we shouldn't be exceeding 2% at this point.
So Councilmember Reed, Mr. Desai is on the line?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, good evening. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, first question is, what is, do you know what the motor fuel tax fund balance is roughly?
Right, so, good evening, mayor, members of the city council, so a couple of things, yeah. The balances are like three different funds. CIP fund has roughly $10.5 million, and generally, it is that high because we issued the bonds last September for the payments would be done. So far this year, we have already spent over $3 million in this year out of that $10 million. The second thing is the motor fuel tax fund, which has a roughly, I think, $3.9 million in fund balance, and that is specifically restricted for certain street-related projects, and I think Dave Stoneback can speak to it, what projects they are going to spend the money on. So obviously, there are a lot more restriction on the MFP funds, and the CIP funds, as I mentioned, has a higher balance because of the bond issue last year, which we would continue to use and draw down upon during this year. As of July, we have already spent $3 million.
But may I just point?
The other thing which I would just clarify about the interest rate, it is called a parameter ordinance.
If I can just make sure that my questions are being answered. So the simple first question was, the motor fuel fund tax balance is about $4 million, from your understanding, correct? Yes, no? Yes, okay. And then the capital improvement fund, you mentioned that there is several million dollars that was spent from it, so the balance may not currently be $10 million, so it's roughly seven? You're muted, apologies. Director Desai, you're muted?
We have spent over $3 million in the current year.
So roughly the balance is, okay, about seven, $7 million. And then the remaining $7 million, so I get, it may not be $10 million now, but it may be somewhere around $7 million, $7.5 million. Is the, the remaining $7.5 million, is that, is that money encumbered, or has it been allocated to some?
I mean, it depends on that, what the contracts are, you know, if the RFPs or BEBS are out and it has been encumbered, sometimes it's not encumbered, and the contract might go out. As we issue the bonds every year, you notice sometimes the fund balance is higher, but obviously, until we pay the last dime off on any contracts, and I think these are the typical infrastructure and big capital projects which run through many years sometimes.
So I'm just, for clarity, the remaining balance, $7.5 million, is or is?
It could be, yes, I mean, and that's what Laura, the city engineer, was working on the projects to show that what are the projects in the pipeline for which we will use this fund balance.
So if I could be, that means that we don't for certain know how much of that is or is not encumbered? Is that what I'm hearing, essentially?
Right, it's not encumbered yet, so, yeah, we add up the projects, and most likely, yes, we will add up to that number, the fund balance, you know?
Well, we don't know yet, okay. And then you're getting to it there with the interest rate.
Right. And so the thing is, what you see in ordinance are called what we call a parameter ordinance, so where we put the, like, relatively higher interest rate, relatively higher annual debt service, that we don't go about that. I just got the numbers from financial advisor two days back, based on the environment, and our interest rate, what we call a true interest risk cost, would come to around 1.711 for the entire bond issue. But generally, we put the higher parameters ordinance in terms of total annual debt service, total interest cost, et cetera, but those are nowhere close to the real numbers.
Do you think it would be, you know, prudent or responsible of us to, to understand how much of that, the CIP, the capital improvement fund, is or is not encumbered, and maybe, and just to be fiscally responsible, draw from the unencumbered CIP funding before bonding out, to save the taxpayers' money on the interest, whether it's 2% interest or it's, you know, 6%, you know, it's quite, 2% on a million dollars is not an insignificant amount of money.
Right, but it is just as, I mean, you can look at the last couple of the bonds that the city did in '18, '19, '20, and if you look at the parameters ordinance, we always use the 6%. And if you look at the actual numbers, it is somewhere around, yeah, 2%, 2.5%, depending on the year, each year was a different one, but, and again, as I said, the numbers from two days back from the financial advisor, we are at around 1.7% interest cost.
I apologize. My question was, do you think it would be, you know, prudent or responsible of us to ensure that the CIP funding is or is not encumbered before moving forward with issuing bonds on this money, on these projects?
I mean, there are a couple of reasons, as I said, sometimes it is, it depends on projects. Projects run through the year. At the same time, the bond process is not that, okay, we run out of the money today and we will have the bond. It is almost a three-to-four months coordinated efforts, working with the bond council, the financial advisors, paying agent, and ultimately, the market, you know? And particularly, some of the communities are using the current low interest rate environment to kind of borrow the money, particularly to fund for the infrastructure.
So the statement that Councilmember Kelly mentioned about the bond, there being no funds on hand and allocable to such purpose, can, have you read that, or I'm sure you have, can you maybe read, look at that statement, and then, again, is that your understanding that we do not have the cash on hand to be able to handle some of these projects, given that you say that we may have money in the CIP fund that's unencumbered?
We have the money right now, but as I said, as we issue the bonds every year, we have the money in, whether we call it cash balance or fund balance, but there are certain projects to be funded out of there. And besides that, I mean, typically, what happens is we always have sometimes some kind of a, some emergency projects of maintenance, particularly in the civic center or somewhere else, and if it's of a capital nature, that comes out of the CIP fund too.
How much time do we have left?
Council, we have two, two and a half minutes left.
Which is, I mean, it's quite a bit of time, which is why I think we should have the 10-minute limit. I will reserve my time for now.
May I?
So no one who has not yet, I know, no one who has not yet spoken is requesting to speak, so we'll go back to, oh, sorry. So the city manager has some comments first.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that Hitesh just mentioned. You know, every year, the city council adopts a capital improvement project plan for the year, and they approve the projects that they wish for the city to execute on. So there is a capital improvement fund, that fund is full of money, that is only derived from bond proceeds at present. At future, maybe we'll get to a place where we'll start funding that fund from additional sources of revenue outside of bonding, cash on hand, ARPA funds, whatever it may be. But as is the practice currently, all of those funds are borrowed funds. So in 2020, when we were doing the 2020 approved projects, before we we issued the bond last fall, we were using the cash balance and drawing it down in an effort to save the taxpayers' money and wait till the last possible second to borrow the bonds to continue working on 2020 projects and fund 2021 projects before we got to the point where we are going to issue the 2021 bond and finish paying off 2018 projects, 2019 projects, 2020 projects, and 2021 projects, because a lot of these projects span multiple years. So the point is, we always are evaluating the cash balance of the capital improvement plan to draw it down to a level that we're comfortable with before it draws down to zero, when we would have no money left. And if something terrible happened, the roof leaked, the road needed to be resurfaced on an emergency basis, we had no money to use, we have the cash on hand to use. So like Hitesh said, when we get approval, if we get approval tonight to borrow, to continue to fund the projects that have already been approved to be executed in this current year, we're not going to get that money for months. So while we continue to pay the bills, that seven million dollars that's currently in the account will continue to dot down. And by the time we get the money, the balance might be three million dollars. It might be lower, it might be higher. But we shouldn't, as a practice, draw it down to nothing before we wait for the bond proceeds to come in, because the invoices are still coming in, and vendors need to be paid, and projects need to continue.
So to that, I mean.
So your lights back on, but the next person to be called on was Councilmember Kelly, and then we'll come back to you. Unless you're saying you haven't yielded the floor yet?
Sure, I haven't yielded. I did yield the floor, but Councilmember Kelly, if you'll yield to me, I appreciate it.
So for the second time then, Councilmember Reed, with two and a half minutes left.
Okay. So you mentioned that the reason that we bond out on this schedule is to save taxpayer money, because there could be a couple of months. I mean, but if all of the money in the CIP fund is already borrowed, it seems like we've got a fund of several million dollars that's just sitting there accruing interest regardless of if we issued the bond, whatever the point, the money's already accruing interest. So if that's the logic, I think we should rethink that. And if we needed money on hand to pay for some emergency, well, that's what we have a reserve fund for. And guess what? We don't pay a bunch of interest on that reserve fund. And so I think, or the general fund reserve balance. So to use, you know, have a several million dollar kind of balance maintained where we're paying interest on that, I think is, is something we should be moving away from. And we should, again, if all of the money in the CIP is borrowed money accruing interest, we should draw that down. We should try to draw that down as quickly as possible, use that money, so it's not just sitting there costing the taxpayers more money, and use non-borrowed money for emergencies.
Yeah, I would agree with you, and I would assert that it's not just sitting there. It's for projects that the city council already approved and that have been obligated, and the bills are coming in, and we're paying them. And I forgot one other thing I was going to say, sorry.
In response to that, a few seconds left. If we're using this money for projects that, you know, we're paying down projects now, it's, it is just sitting there in some regard. There has to be some of the money that's not allocated at a particular moment to be able to do the things you just said the money would be used if there's an emergency or a project that came up, or we use it to pay down, you know, previous invoices or for new projects. I think that that kind of expenditure should come from the reserve fund, so we're not accruing the, whatever percentage interest on those funds.
I remembered it was the reserve fund, so historically, the reserve fund hasn't been adequately funded, and therefore, it was not a reliable source to use for any projects that might be unforeseen that may come up.
Right. Yeah. But we have contingency funds also, and I'd also like to ask.
So just, hold on. We now have somebody who's not spoken yet who's asked to speak. So we'll go to Councilmember Braithwaite, and I promise we will get back to Councilmember Kelly as well. Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and member of the city's council. I think we've been here a number of times, and maybe we've just hit this crossroad of a philosophical difference. I'm prepared to vote for this. Nothing that someone says is going to deter. And I think I've asked for this, you know, several meetings ago, is that we have an overall explanation of how our CIP process works, as well as the funds. It's, it's difficult and sometimes confusing. I appreciate the numbers, and the reason that I asked for the sources, am I reading this, you know, from our city of Evanston's website, or someone else's math that I now have to reinterpret? So I think with all due respect, Councilmember Reed and Kelly, like, you've made your point very eloquently. Can we please vote? Because I don't think anybody's mind is going to be changed on this that we have seen a number of times. Thank you.
So one last person seeking recognition, Councilmember Kelly, who has 50 seconds left.
Fifty seconds? Just from reading my, so I'm sorry, but this is irresponsible to vote on this? I just, I feel very strongly, the three million dollars that you've spent already from that unobligated, can you tell us how much of that is going to be paid back by the bond? How much of that is going towards projects listed in the bond, in the 2021 bond proposal?
Most of that fund is for the prior year, yeah. I mean, I don't have the details. I have the overall numbers, I ran the reports.
We should know what the fifteen million dollars is earmarked for before we obligate ten million dollars leveraged debt on the taxpayers. We all need to know that. So that three million dollars, I suspect some of that is going to be repaid in the 2021 bond. And Erica, could you tell me, please, if the 2021 spending on the old pre-2021 projects is in addition to the CI-approved budget of 7.7 million?
Can you please restate that?
So, so the, the 2021 spending on the old pre-2021 projects that are carrying over, are you saying that this is in addition to the, to the capital improvement approved budget of 7.7 million? Because we are spending, you know, another million. I want to know if the money that you talked about rolling over, is that in addition to the CI-approved budget?
I get confused in terms of the source that's being cited. I would love to.
So, I mean, Erica was suggesting that, well, there is money that started last year, and we have to use this for continued, you know, these are continuing projects. Is this in addition, the money that would be spent on those pre-existing projects carried over, is that money on top of the 7.7 million dollars for, in the approved CI budget?
I'm not sure if, where I follow where you're going with this. Like, the, you keep referring to this fifteen million dollars, and Hitesh already.
It's not just, see, the 10.5 is the CI, but it's a total.
What you explained was fifteen million dollars, and that was end of 2020 numbers. And Hitesh explained that motor fuel tax funds are, are specifically for certain things. They can't be, you know, we can't use motor fuel tax funds for park improvement projects. So if you're looking at the cash balance of the capital improvement fund, which now sits around seven million, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, we have seven million dollars left in the bank to spend on capital projects that have been approved. If we are going to spend over the million dollars that you've referred to, the council would have to vote on that.
Right, and we should do that ahead of time. But we've also spent three million dollars, and we don't know, we don't know, we don't know what that three million dollars is. I suspect that a large portion of that three million is on projects that was identified in the bond, and that will be repaid in the bond. That three million dollars that's already been spent out of the 10.5 of the CI fund is going to be repaid by the bond, because some of that was towards projects listed in the bond. I think that we, as a council, we need to see when we have that large amount of unobligated funds, what the plan is for that. And yes, I'm not suggesting that we, we spend down to zero, but that's, you know, 10.5 million in the CI fund of unobligated, and this is the audited, you know, year-end. We need to know what that's going towards. We need to know what that three million dollars went towards, because like I say, I think that.
What you've just explained is exactly how it works. So yes, when we get the 2021 bond, it will, in a sense, reimburse ourselves for the 2021 projects that we've already paid for out of that fund balance. But you have to also understand that there's still invoices coming in for 2020 projects that also need to use that cash balance.
And that's why I asked you, if that's on top of, are you suggesting that the payments that you're going to make on those continued projects is in addition to the money that was voted on, the amount that was voted on in the CI fund in 2020 of 7.7 million dollars? Are you saying that that's money in addition? Because we, the council voted and approved a budget of 7.7 million dollars for the CI fund?
I think I've tried to explain it a couple of times. I don't understand what you're saying.
Then could we minimally, could we at least hold this so that Hitesh and others prepare documents so that we can see what the unobligated funds, including the three million dollars, is going to be paid for before we leverage debt, more than likely, a large amount of debt unnecessarily on taxpayers? Can I please ask that at least at the next council meeting that they come back? And there is time to do that.
So, sorry to you.
I would just add one more thing. Excuse me, sorry. There were a couple of items held in APW this evening regarding capital projects where there was a desire to distinguish or identify alternative funding sources other than current bonds. And because we're not having another council meeting until September, and by the time those contracts are awarded, those projects actually won't be able to be completed. So we won't be able to do speed humps this year, we won't be able to do the additional pavement markings. Those are projects that no longer will be, be possible to be completed, because we're simply putting ourselves too far into the construction season for them to occur before the weather changes. So, you know, we can certainly bring back whatever information is being requested, but we are on a, on a timeframe for which we need to accomplish doing the borrowing to continue to execute on the projects that have already been approved by the city council.
But we have seven point, we have, we have, and some of that 10 million has, the three million has already been spent on some of those very projects you're talking about, and there's seven million dollars available today, right this moment.
So Councilmember, your, your time expired a while ago. Let me call on Councilmember Nguyen, who's the only person still, oh, and Councilmember Reed has already spoken twice, switched a light on, but you did already speak twice, I believe. Was there, were you?
Yes, I was seeking recognition.
To ask for the questions, or for what purpose?
Yeah.
Well, let's go to Councilmember Nguyen first.
Well, I just understood that we are not going to be doing pavement markings and speed humps and a number of other things this year. And I am very disappointed that those are, those things are not going to happen. I regularly get requests from residents asking to have pavement markings refreshed. They want to know why they can't happen more frequently. And I explain that we, we go out for a single contract for that, and they are, they have to be done at a certain time of year, just as speed humps have to be done at a certain time of year, and a number of these other things. This is, this is part of doing business and making, keeping our streets safe. Pavement markings are critical to pedestrian safety. Speed humps are critical to pedestrian safety and to, and the safety of everyone in our streets. I, we do, I'm going to call the question. I'm calling the question on these bonds right now.
Second.
Point of, there is a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there is a motion on the floor. So let's, there's no one else seeking recognition is still entitled to speak. So let's.
I'm seeking.
You've, you spoke twice and did your full five minutes.
I don't, I did my full five minutes. I could have sworn I had some time left within.
All right, I will, I will give you 30 seconds, and then we're going to call the roll.
All right, thank you. I do want to note that we could be, we have a meeting in 48 hours. We have a meeting on Thursday. So all of the.
No way.
We can potentially identify another fund for this to come from. The other thing is, I think it's important for us to be able to take in new information. We verified, you know, it may not have been 10 million, 7.5 million. Verified the numbers that there is money within these various accounts. As far as the motor fuel tax, I can see within the bond that there's about $2 million that's for street resurfacing. I would presume that street resurfacing is an eligible use of motor fuel tax funds.
Councilmember?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see your lights back on, Councilmember Kelly, but you're well past your five minutes. Do you have a?
So I just don't understand if, the two percent, like, why, currently we're at three percent, you know, I would like to know how Hitesh thinks we will save money if the coupon is set at three percent, which is the current rate of the bonds to be refunded. I mean, it has to be at two percent. Why would, right? I mean, how would we save money if you set it at three percent?
This is, what you see, Councilmember, what you see in the parameters ordinance, as I said, these are the estimated higher-end number. Where would we settle? I mean, if you see, based on the numbers provided by the financial, it would be under two percent.
Well, it has, but I mean, it's.
I mean, I, I think.
I mean, the market changes.
We have to have savings. We can't refund the 2012 series and not, you, you need to show us what kind of a savings we'll have. And I, you're, you're planning to expand it to a full 20-year bond. I'm saying that we should reduce it to 10-year. If we're going to save the citizens' money, we need to reduce it to a 10-year.
Mr. Cummings, can you jump in?
Mayor Bis, I just wanted to bring to your attention that there was a motion and a second to call a question, and Rule 18.9 requires that motion be voted on without debate. Thank you.
My apologies, my mistake. Would the clerk call the roll on the motion to call the question?
Councilmember Fleming?
The question we're calling is the amendment.
The amendment, yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
But am I voting on the amendment, or I'm voting to call the question?
Call the question on the amendment.
Call the question.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
We're voting to call the question, and then we'll vote on the amendment.
On my amendment, that the staff bring back in accounting transparency?
That is correct.
Okay. Then yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion of nine is zero, unvoted nine is zero, the motion passes. So the question is called. Would the clerk please call the question on Councilmember Kelly's underlying amendment that was emailed to everybody and read out loud?
Councilmember Fleming?
I'm just be, I'm so confused. So that the amendment part, though, is just in bold, correct, in this email that I'm looking at?
Yes.
Thank you. And I need to read it a thousand times.
Yes. Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Oh, sorry.
She only gets it once. On a vote of four voting aye, and a five voting nay, the amendment fails. Now, would the clerk call the roll on A 15 without an amendment?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
It's going to be weird, but no. I don't like you.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
That was fascinating. On a five to four vote, A 15 passes with no amendment.
Thank you.
Now, would Councilmember Nguyen like to make a motion on item P 5?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of up to $50,000 additional CDBG/CF funding to expand the emergency ownership. Wait, what did you say? Oh, P 5. I'm, pardon me. I move for introduction ordinance 75021, creating a provisional moratorium on the permitting and construction of new internal and attached non-owner occupied accessory dwelling units.
Is there a second? Councilmember Nguyen moves P 5. Councilmember Revel seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite, Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
On a vote of six to three, item P 5 passes. Councilmember Nguyen, would you like to make a motion on R 1?
Yes. This is for action. I move approval of ordinance 76021, amending section 1-7-4 of the city code concerning deputy city clerk appointments attachment PDF. So I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves approval of R1. Councilmember Fleming, seconds. Councilmember Reed?
This is just very quick. I understand that I have made the amendment to say that, you know, it would be in accordance with HR policy, but as I've gone back and looked at how other municipalities do this, they tend to approve, because the clerk is an independently elected office, it tends to be that the city council approves the hiring of deputy clerks. So the clerk would bring it before the council, and the council would vote yea on approving that staff person. And so I'm wondering if there's any appetite to be in conformance with most other municipalities who do allow for their clerks to hire and fire their own staff.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to vote for that because I haven't looked at that, and we don't, you know, that's a whole other thing for me. I do have a question about this that I meant to bring up last time. It does say the city manager approves all hired employees, so I guess my question here, my option, I mean, my argument in the first place was to let the clerk hire their own staff, yes, going through the standard background check and whatever else we have for staff. But I guess the question I have hypothetically, which we don't have to discuss, is if the clerk wants to hire one person and the city manager does not, you know, like, you know, think that's the best fit, then what, you know, we probably need to think about what to do there. Or if this just has the standard language from the legal department, since we're a city manager, form of government, that the manager approves all hires, not that the manager would weigh in, you know, once a person went through the hiring process, that the city manager will come in at the end and veto that hire. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Was that a clear question at midnight?
No.
No, okay. So, so, so I guess the point I want to make is that I think this person should be hired through all the other means, but since the city clerk is going to be supervising this person, that they would pick the person they think is best, who has gone through whatever the process is. And so because we have the sentence in here that says the city manager approves all hired employees of the city, I understand that to be the case, but want to make sure we are not putting the clerk in a situation where if they like Sue and the city manager likes Bob, that, you know, Bob wins because the city manager is the ultimate hiring authority. And maybe we just have that language in there because that's what we have everywhere, so I just want to be very clear, I guess.
Yeah, I understood your point, and the city manager reference is not included in the actual ordinance update, it's just reflected in the staff memo as to the current practice, so-
I got it. Okay, thank you.
With this, with this change, what you're understanding of what you're desiring is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
And just point of information, Council Cummings?
Yeah, Councilmember Reed, you have four minutes and 15 seconds left.
Council Cummings, to Councilmember Fleming's point, that was, is that an issue? I mean, given that, again, the code says the city manager is responsible for the various departments of the city, the clerk's office is not listed as a department, sands the language that used to exist that expressly said that the city manager could hire the deputy clerk, was, is that a, is that a concern that the city manager could potentially even have that hiring authority?
So the city code does spell out that the city manager has that authority of hiring city employees. I think I would have to do a little more research with respect to the division of, you know, you have a separate elected office, and whether they're considered a city employee. But based on the plain language, yes, that is a valid point that Councilmember Fleming raises. But I don't think that that should be an issue if there's communication between the clerk's office and the city manager's office.
Are we able to have that, you know, thorough research done? And I think it's really important that we understand what the true role, responsibility, and authority of the clerk's offices, and I think we really need to start moving in that direction, have a very clear, I think this is a good step, and so thank you, Alderman Fleming, for moving this forward. But I think we need to do a much deeper dive on this issue.
Seeing no further questions, would the clerk call the roll on R1?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye. On a vote of eight to one, is that right?
Yes.
On a vote of eight to one, thanks. R1 passes, and that brings us to AP1, which actually, if I'm being totally honest, I pulled it off in error. I think these are all uncontroversial, I hope these are all uncontroversial appointments. And so if no one has anything they want to discuss about this, I would just ask for a quick motion and passage of AP1.
I move approval of, of the city of Evanston, this is A1?
AP1.
AP1.
I'll move approval of the appointments to boards, commissions, and committees as elaborated in our packet on page 655 and 656.
Second.
Councilman Nusma moves AP1. Councilmember Fleming, seconds. Would the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No. On a vote of eight to one, AP1 passes, and this brings us to call of the wards, starting with Councilmember Fleming.
Yes, no one's watching this at midnight, but there will be no ward meeting in August. I would need to reschedule, I'll be out of town.
Councilmember Kelly?
I would just like to ask, I don't know if this is a formal referral, but I'll put it in writing, that going forward, once again, with this, our staff is now spending over $1 million of what was approved in the CIP last year. This has happened year after year, where they, you know, leverage debt, spend, spend, and then ask for an amendment after the fact. I ask that that stop, that going forward, when we're going to overspend the CIP, that staff please come first to city council and ask for an approved budget amendment to the CIP. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Just sending out a shout-out to our staff this past week, starting on the first, there were a number of some amazing community events that I've been lucky to be a part of. So first to Director Lawrence Hemingway, this past August 1st, we hosted Jamaican Independence Day, taking a year off because of the pandemic. We had 30 days to pull it together, and I'd say it was probably one of our best events just given the short time, the fact that we've been in social isolation. I want to thank Director Obo from the Health Department for pulling together his team outreach, and also we had some vaccinators that attended. I want to thank also the Evanston Police Department Chief Barnes, Sergeant Carter, and all the other officers who attended to help keep the peace. We also celebrated National Night Out, another well-attended event. I want to acknowledge Sergeant Scott Sofier of PST Officer Brooks, PST Officer Daly, and there are so many more that helped to organize the events. Every year, we have Moving the Park, and this year, they did an excellent job hosting. And I also want to thank the folks from Soul &amp; Smoke that came out, as well as CNW who donated ice cream. And then lastly, there was another community event at Mason Park this past Friday, again, hosted by the Health Department, youth and young, youth and young adult team led by Audrey Thompson and all the other workers that were there, hosted an amazing event with a lot of people, and I also had an opportunity to go over to Fleetwood where the Foster seniors were. So thank you all for hosting. The sum is probably over 2,000 or 3,000 residents, and everyone had a great time as we wrap up this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.